Twenty two meeting of the board selection order. Um, is there anyone here that wish to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Can you please um say you say there could be the bright lights, but you can say your name for the record and tell us what we want to talk about.
Great. Jared Landbo Athletic Club. Um, so I had I emailed you, uh, Bruce over earlier this afternoon. So two thousand twenty one, we came to the board and asked for approval to put two sheds at um one at Gordon doing midfield behind the backstop. And one at Sergeant Park behind the backstop, which was approved um in what I would call a mistake. The uh, we chose to purchase plastic sheds, so you guys can kind of see where I'm going with this one probably already. They have very short life expectancy and they're already falling. So I had been emailing Darcy Little um as early as uh June of this year to let her know that we've gone to have to replace the sheds. And it's a, it's my own fault. I thought that that was um something we didn't need to seek. Your approval for because we already had the existing sheds there and you were basically just replacing them with something that was going to be a little bit more potential and less. Um, that's going to do. So I had reached out to her on Monday to let her know that the sheds, which we had talked about, were getting delivered. At which point I got an email this morning from uh Chris Andrews. He said you need to get a little thing delivered in order to that needs to show up. So I'm here tonight hoping that you guys are okay with um we're basically replacing existing sheds of it there with a um nicer three sperry um wooden shed instead of the plastic one we already have with the backstops.
I mean, uh, does Dave normally with like the moment's called voice capture, you have a lease agreement this early? Was there a lease agreement set up for this that we bought or?
Not for the ones that are there now.
Why? Is there plastic and not wood?
I'm not sure.
When? How many days?
Two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty one, the summer we put them.
I don't need them.
I was here.
So there's a standard that we usually follow, Jared, when we put these buildings on, the town buys them back for a dollar or something and and we lease them back to the organizations. But we accept responsibility. Uh, I I would think we'd have to follow the same protocol with these with these two two sheds.
There's always current on our charge, right?
Right. It's more of a legality issue.
First, if I may, after discussing this with Jared and David, uh, we've got several different agreements that are now expired. Some of them were with Bo Youth, um, Bo Lacrosse and Bo Soccer, which are now part of BAC.
Uh, some are.
Some are.
Lacrosse is both soccer.
So what Dave and I want to do is after the holidays, go back through and basically make a one agreement for all of all of our fields with BAC and all of their structures. As opposed as dealing with them all separately.
We need to get these installed tomorrow, right? That's your schedule.
So unfortunately, the truck is rolling at seven AM, so yeah.
This is the forgiveness thing, not a permission thing.
Well, I'm I'm here. I'm hoping it is acceptable, but um, yeah, we're.
Well, I I I I would be for it. Obviously, BAC does a lot for the town, but just that we follow the same protocol that we do with the other communities, uh, the organizations. And we set that all up.
You're going to make the motion.
Please.
I'll make a motion that we allow BAC to install two uh sheds on town property. They'll have to transfer ownership of those sheds consistent with other agreements. Transfer ownership of the sheds to the town. The town will then offer and enter into a lease agreement with the BAC.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I post on.
And I'm just going to say for the record, next time ask more than twenty half percent of the time.
Those last two.
Thanks for all you guys.
Get in contact with Tanya.
But the leasing.
Uh, we need to offer as David decide those.
Well, I think I think they'll actually come back here once they have finalized install. When they do them after the holidays, we'll do them all together.
Very nice.
Awesome. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Britain's rule.
Anthony put raises his hand for something that wasn't on the agenda.
There were more.
Dude, I was approached by uh. I pressed that wheel, uh, up high lane. Apparently he had access to the snowmobile trailer at one point for the neighbor. The neighbor sold the house. I had a meeting with that gentleman. He's not very friendly with people uh using the property. So he came to the snowmobile trailer without sneaking through somebody's yard. The uh, E P O there, you can see it said a pad of bow. It was part of the development. I'm not sure. Probably because it was a stream in there at one point. It's kind of dried up because of the road and the house. But it's town and land and it connects right there is a red line. You see the red line goes up to connects into the existing snowmobile trailer in the back. I would just like to request that uh, I know what the process is and we put it in front of you for the night and you have to make it to look at it. Uh, at least access permission for the club to put a access trail for nothing big, maybe like, I'm saying six feet wide, maybe the people can walk down there and get into the woods and the trails.
So Anthony, um, were we talking about sixty seventy fifteen one hour or sixty seventy thirteen?
Talking about the one with yellow perimeter.
That's all.
That's that's our land.
A trail, that's why.
Where did the trail used to go?
That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Where did the trail used to go and now they can't go there anymore?
Oh, there was a trail. You cut into a guy's yard.
Oh, so this wasn't the original trail.
There was a trail in the US, completely raw, first timer.
There's a line that we used to do subdivision, so there was access to trails condition in some of this isn't one of those.
Don't think so.
And then what about um? My concern is if we authorize a new trail, it'd be cut through Heidi Lane without the residents of Heidi Lane opining on such a thing.
Right.
They'd be worried about people pulling up in their snowmobile trailer, parking on the street.
Yeah.
Um. If this is something that you'd like to see as a public hearing, I would recommend that after the holiday, we invite people Heidi Lane to opine on this.
Yeah.
Um, but I will allow you to kind of.
Or what's the plus? You want people to come back into?
Well, it's a good little public hearing and so that people Heidi Lane can come.
Okay.
Sandy, um, Sandy Crystal on Cherry Drive, we need to check and see whether there were any restrictions on an open space. Uh, area that belongs to the town because it might have been part of the town approval. We often have perimeter buffers. That are uh required that are not to be disturbed. So um, I think that needs to be checked before any um.
Do 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 no trails run across open spaces? Just curious. I'm asking.
It it depends upon, no, it's not that it's uh across open spaces. It it just depends upon. Uh, usually the trails were part of the um approval or um. It it's just that uh a perimeter buffer is supposed to be intact around some of the uh.
It's not up here. Just so you can see, it's not. We're not talking about the development here. My development, that's buffer.
That's actually with a piece of land that they chunked out for somebody.
Yeah, we've looked at this lot of land before. Actually, maybe before any of you were on, uh, there was a gentleman who owned the back lawn, one of the two back lines. And asked us to give a question to you on law.
So I own the two lots in the back side now.
It says Calabao sixty seven.
Yeah, I bought more plot behind it. So the only plot, the names are going to be buttered. One was used to do it for studies property.
Was he a doctor?
No.
No, no, the old guy you want.
Eric.
Eric, no, he he did like.
I think that's the way to go, though, is to get on for a meeting after the holidays and uh ask the. Lady lady to give their input on it. My conservation. Well, I want to know about the whole subdivision conditions. If there are any on it, I know we put all these conditions on point. I I know that the. Lots of people already had an existing trail across the back, so. I'm wondering if that was our original subdivision, we kept prepared trails. We should check on all that and then like get back in here.
And we can check on that, but we're a couple of things. Yeah, I also, uh, when we're finished with this, I did want to bring up a couple of things before you get into your regular business.
You have to reach for it.
We did. They raised their hand and you all looked that way and.
Yeah, what do you guys know where you're for? Sorry, I forgot about the, I forgot about the objective. All right, Sandy, what do you have?
Um, I just wanted Sandy Crystal one shortly drive. I wanted to mention that um it will probably be um the end of December before. Um, I bring back a charter for the the fever related subcommittee. Uh, we had a meeting last night and um. Scoped out a few things, but I think that um we'll see how we we're going to have another meeting in December. And hopefully we'll get a report of people because we sort of like a sort of like a repeat of the select board meeting.
I think um, I think take your, from my point of view, take your time, get it right. I will not be making any votes on Beaver Dam removal between now and when you are ready, so.
Well, we're not, well, it's not Beaver Dam removal. It's it's the charter for the subcommittee.
I that that is going to, that is going to make recommendations to the board of selection regarding future Beaver Dam removal requests.
Well, we're not going to be making recommendations in a month. No, that's.
What I'm trying to say is that I'm that no Beaver Dam removal requests are going to be rushed to the board in the coming weeks. I'd rather get it resolved.
Right. I I do also want to mention that um as far as uh. Trails, because among the things that was brought up is that um they, there has been a trail work uh request form between. That Bo Open Spaces and the Conservation Commission have have used like when Bo Open Spaces does trails and we. You know, there's been some discussion about extending it to um other any trails on town property. So um. That that's something to keep in mind, especially with this year.
Great. Thanks. So there's no public hearings.
Can I make a motion to do the uh consent agenda first?
Certainly. No signal on that? Any discussion? All in favor? I I post on. Okay, go ahead. Somebody want to move it to send agenda forward? I thought you moved to take it out of order.
I know, I just voted it.
All right, great. That's out of work.
Um, I just figured Mr. Matisse was sitting here for that. He now knows that he's going to prove to.
There you go. All right. And now next round is a meeting.
No, no, oh, you have, you have to wait for the whole media. You gotta say the whole. Really?
Now we have DuBois and King next up, so I'm going to recuse myself if you move. So you can leave the word.
Right. Good evening. Uh, uh, my name is Nick Schedule. I'm an engineer with DuBois and King. And uh, John Ashley here, project director of Public Works Division, also with DuBois and King. So uh, as you know, we've been working on uh uh design phase efforts for extending the. Existing municipal system to the north to serve um areas of the Tiff District uh for water. So specifically, you know, Bo Mills and Bo Junction and the properties along three A um. Between Vaughn Road and uh. The city of Concord border. Um, just kind of a recap on uh what we've done so far to date. Uh, previously, we had the extension kind of grouped into one giant uh. Project, so to speak, and and encompassed everything from uh treatment to storage to water main. Uh, interconnection with the city of Concord. Um, and uh. During this phase, we've uh identified contracts where we can break this project into um. Smaller chunks that, you know, are are easier to bite off for contractors. You can get more competition with contractors and and um. Hopefully have uh the best possible pricing for the projects and then broken into um components where. Uh, it gives you a little bit more of a menu to pick and choose from and and uh depending on priorities of which properties need to be served. Um, sooner rather than later, there could be alternative options in terms of how those get connected. Um. But just to run through how we broke down the contracts, we have um contract one is the has to do with treatment at the existing treatment plant. Contract two would be um. The uh main extension trunk line from Vaughn Road to Logging Hill Road. Contract three would be a new water storage tank associated with that extension to uh provide atmospheric pressure to the extended system. Uh, contract four involves a booster pump station, which would be um more or less specific to the uh development. Potential at Logging Hill Road. Right now, we have um some information about how that property will be developed and we have existing elevation information. But what we don't have is finished elevation information or um final demand requirements on on what, you know. Fire flows and or sprinkler flows and or domestic demand is going to come out of that property. Um, and then contracts five and six have to do with um both interconnection with Concord and serving um. The rest of Bo Mills and and Bo Junction. So uh, and there are some kind of. Uh, options on these where if we have, we, you know, we're we're interested in hearing from you guys about how things are going with Concord. If if we should continue thinking about them in terms of uh integrating that into the design and how this goes forward and in terms of. A set of drawings that we're going to put out to bid. Um, and uh, so.
But do you want an update now or later?
No, it's just as good as any. Yeah.
Well, yesterday, um, we thought we made a lot of headway with Concord. Um. We, you know, they established a committee, Fred Teach established a committee and found that they had water supply, found that it was feasible to connect with Bo. Uh, we were at the point where, and I forgive me for the term uh source, source development.
Charge.
Source charge. We were supposedly at that point and months went by and we hadn't heard anything. So I went to the last F PAC meeting, the financial arm of the city council in Concord and said, hey, what's going on? I was the elephant in the room because nobody even knew I was there or why I was there, but um and found that the chair of F PAC was expecting us to get back to them. And we were under the impression through our water committee uh chairman that they were getting back to us. So it was good that we kind of brought it together. Um, found out we were supposed to be on yesterday's agenda to get some sort of blessing uh and we were removed from the agenda. Um, to to the remiss of two people on the on the board and the mayor himself. Um, so uh. I I thought we were there. I really thought that this would have been something we would have been able to connect into at some point. Um, but I don't uh, I I'm I'm back to thinking that we're off to January now because I know they're not going to do anything in December. Um, so still plugging away, but I I just another setback, just when I thought we were really that close to to making something happen.
Okay. Um. I mean, it'll be good to get the get an understanding of what that development charge is going to be because that we can plug that in as a line item. You know, we do have a line item for interconnection to the city, but it's, you know, at this point, it's kind of a. It's six figure guests, right? I mean, it's.
Right. Well, it's, you know, and I hate to say it. I I hated it when Matt Matt Taylor of Bless Bless the Soul, Missed to Pieces was. Just always thinking this is never going to happen with Concord. Let's continue to develop here and I'm. That's, I'm still dragging that that, you know, that that bag of presents along, but I.
But yeah, I mean.
You know, I'm hoping, I really am hoping. Uh, and with that, there's some looming additional water treatment facility that Congress is talking about. And they need blessings from the surrounding towns. So I'm hoping that that, you know, they see the light of day. I mean, I I was, when I called an individual, I was told. Uh, that there was some love coming your way. And I said, really? We're not on the agenda anymore. So uh, not mentioning names, it just, it just seemed like it was going to happen. And now we're another setback.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess that kind of. Knowing that, I think that's why we broke this into certain contracts. So so I think, you know, one of the priorities we had with. Um, seeing the development potential at Logging Hill and and Exit One, we thought that was an important property to identify as getting served. Sooner rather than later. And although coming from Concord is a shorter distance to get that property served. I think, you know, us coming to the north is is a component of that. So we we've identified that as one of the kind of early contracts, I guess.
I appreciate you guys bringing these subjects in. I think uh, I'd, in the future, we would rather refer to this one, what's our priorities? And to decide that a potential development on Logging Hill Road is our priority, it may not be. We have not taken a vote on that yet. And if you ask me what my priority is, now that's only one, it is getting water to go home. We have, we have existing taxpayers there who do not have potable water, and that's what this is about. Now, to the extent that we can get to Vaughn Road and at some point get to your mills for it to lock in, those are. Nowhere near as concerned as resident or businesses that don't have water.
Yep.
Um, and I certainly don't want to be spending thirteen million dollars based on. Oh, a couple of diagrams provided by a single developer who said he was going to build two hundred fifty apartments. Yeah.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, I think I understand that. And the other component of that property is it is a, I guess, a. Threshold property in terms of elevation wise, that's the highest elevation in the in the system with within the Tiff District that we need to serve. So that it makes it makes it.
Fortunately.
Yeah.
Um, but we will. Not based on, not based on a couple of cartoons.
Sure. Yeah. Um. So just kind of, I guess we'll start with.
Yeah. So at the, at the treatment, you've been getting uh some water quality data. So we just got pretty recently. And um, so we're not as far along with the treatment plant uh. Design changes there uh as we are with the rest of the. The project, like the distribution system, especially with farther farthest along with. Um, so the, so what's going on with contract one, the treatment plant is that there you have um elevated iron and manganese levels. Um, and you have some detections for sodium chloride and per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. And um currently manganese is above what we're expecting. Uh, M C L to be the maximum contaminant level to be established at. So. There would be a point where you'll either be required to do notification to all your users about the manganese levels and or. Treat the water uh depending on what level it stays at. We also expect based on these contaminants, these compounds, iron, manganese, uh sodium chloride and PFOS. That those have a good chance of increasing with their increased water use by expanding the system. Um. So and and then we have looked at the interconnection with Hookset, and this is a, this is a concern they had about whether that would have ever happened. They 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 have some concerns about they would want treatment provided. So. This is one of the contracts and based on the information we we have, uh, we've, we've got um a footprint and schematic for um. Treatment of manganese, which is the one that seems most imminent that you'll need to by regulation. And then um we are also planning space for what'll end up needing to be reverse osmosis to remove chlorides and PFOS. So. Uh. That's, that's that part of the design. Uh, that's probably our biggest focus. Yeah, going forward in the design because we we just got the, there were some some water quality data we needed to really flesh out that design. We just got it pretty recently, so. This would be an area we have focused on. It would be a separate building on the existing uh. Treatment plant property. Um, it's going to be, so looking at the sizing of the manganese treatment equipment and and reserving space for the. Reverse osmosis. I think it's going to be pretty similar in size to the existing building. That's where we're at with that part.
I mean, interesting question. So. With an expansion of you water usage, you're expecting the current contamination levels rise.
Yes.
Everything that you listed there, not just the iron and manganese, but the PFOS as well?
It's, it's like hard to predict, but it's, that would be my best guess because it's, but it's coming from somewhere.
Right.
And we would be, we would be creating more of a tone of depression that would allow those type of contaminants.
And the current treatment plan. Does not include reverse osmosis? That would be, we will get to that later on after levels rise even higher? Is that?
Uh, we frankly, we aren't that far into it. We could, we could plan it to be built right at the beginning. But we'll at least plan the space for it. Um, and I could see easily making that an alternate in a bid so that the the whole building gets built. The manganese treatment definitely gets built and we get a price to also build the reverse osmosis. And then we'd have the flexibility to, if it's an ad alternate in your bid. Documents, then you can choose to do it or not, depending on if it fits in your budget.
I'm just concerned about delivering contaminated water to those that have contaminated water or no water. You know, and then we take on this and just deliver more contaminated water.
Um, I should say also about PFOS that, so that's currently below and below the state standards. At at the current concentrations, it may increase over time. Also, the EPA recently gave a new advisory on PFOS. Levels and a lot where it's generally expected in the industry that a lot of states will adopt lower standards based on EPA's recommendation. So all of those could be, you know, it could become a no grainer in any book that you would need to do it. As well, so.
Is this, is this treatment facility is going to be at the new tech?
No, at the existing water treatment plant.
And how much to do this right? What's this cost? Oh.
We.
This is twenty million dollars?
Dude, no, that's the, that's the total.
That's everything. So what we have in, what we have figured right now is we have. Uh, a dollar amount for the manganese, iron manganese treatment system of. Close to a million dollars, nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then we would add an additional cost for installation in the building. I think we we have the. Treatment building, which, you know, allows for the expanded footprint, but doesn't treat PFAS. It doesn't treat chlorides, which we know are elevated, but are below. Uh, regulatory levels.
Oh, that's good.
But um, that's one point seven five million, I think is is.
For the building.
Yes.
So all, so bigger building, manganese, one point seven five million, but not chlorides and not PFAS.
Right. And so, and and I mean, one of the things we don't know is is how much is it going to elevate? We are, as John mentioned, we're kind of, you know, I would say we're we're not as far along on on the treatment component as other components. Because this was something that it's come in later anyway, but one of the things we've asked the operator to start doing is is. A a little bit of a modification in their pumping rates so that we can, we know the the well is permitted for one million gallons per day. The system doesn't ever use one million gallons a day, but we're trying to have it simulate where it can pump at a higher rate for a shorter period of time. To to see if that increases concentrations to try and simulate a a. Uh, expanded system. Yeah.
Uh, and what would estimate be if we, if you're trying to do it all and. Got an expanded building, one seven five manganese, and then PFAS and chlorides. So do you have any idea with that extra?
I mean, no, we don't yet.
Five million, two million?
It'll be less than the the one point seven five million and would be, I don't know, maybe it would be fifty percent. And I don't, I'm not really sure.
So maybe another.
Maybe less, maybe more.
I'm going to say.
That's the conclusion about R O being what we would need to do for the chlorides. Which also would be treating PFOS, uh, just came in recently.
Okay, the other component of treatment too is, so we're, we're, we would provide space for treatment up to the full capacity of the well.
Sure.
But the day that goes online, we know that we're not going to need that capacity. So for manganese treatment, we've got a series of three. Treatment units where where two would be built at the at at startup. Because that would provide a hundred percent redundancy with just one running, one hundred percent redundancy. And then when you get to full buildout, you have the third one come on and you still get the redundancy when you have one out of service.
I think from our point of view, to know that it's a million dollars one way or another to treat all of the options at full draw with increased levels or. That's enough to, for my gut to say, at least we just understand the scope.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, long road to Long Island.
Long Road to Longing Hill, so this is that main, um, trunk line extending, at least getting us into, uh. Bo Mills, this could, you know, theoretically, if we want to change priorities, this photo shows us where we would diverge from. Um, Grandview, we could go down Carriage Road and serve Creponi from our extension rather than. Serving Creponi from, uh, City of Concord, like our, our current. Uh, contract would be Creponi gets served in contract, which theoretically could happen first. But it would be served through City of Concord, and. If you haven't built contract two, that's your only option to get Creponi water, if you've built contract two, at least up to Grandview. Then we could go down Carriage Road across Turkey River and serve. Bo Junction through the extension.
Um, with or without the second, uh, second.
Okay. We, we would. We'd have to talk about that because we'd have a transmission mate, you know, it, it has to do with that pressure right at the tank. So where the, where the water line leaves three A and goes onto Grandview, you have a high point there, and so without the tank. We're only at, we're, we're basically right at twenty PSI, so. The only option is to try and increase the size of that pipe, which we, I think we went to a certain size and we said. If we keep going, it's not gonna be cost effective, so we, we stopped, but I think we would need a tank in that location for that.
Yeah.
The, for the extension, more so than pressure at Bo Junction. Cause it kind of comes, you know, comes down Grandview back to.
If you understand, my number one goal is to have water at. What, what, what order do we address this?
If Concord could happen fast, we would go that.
If Concord happens, uh, the whole landscape.
I would think we would do a portion of contract two up to the I ninety three crossing.
Yeah.
You probably wouldn't bother doing the I ninety three crossing and you would put the money towards crossing Turkey River at Route three A, so. You would need to do a portion of contract two and. Contract three, which would be the tank.
I, I did jump in. We have to remember though, Chris, is stepping back. To bring the water just to Bo Junction. There would be no funds to support that, that would have to be all tax dollar bond. The thought was when we bring it, kind of part of the pit, we bring the water up. And then we cover the cost of the bond with development in, on South Street and. The Colby property.
But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna set the success of this program on. Three hundred or two hundred fifty apartments going on Long Island Road.
But there's more discussions going on with them. But I'm, I'm just saying. That was the initial, that was the initial plan. When the board said go forward, yes, to get the water boat junction, but again, the only way you can afford it is with increased value. Within the Tiff area, cause how much would it cost just to bring it to Creponi, I mean.
I, I, I mean, we could, we could pretty quickly and easily. Manipulate our plans to, to come up with that cost estimate within a couple of days, I mean, we, we could get that to you.
But I think. Twenty million, I don't know one percentage of this is part of getting to Creponi, but if it's ten million dollars, then we need. Half million dollars a year in bond payments, what are we generating in the tip now, three hundred? Is that right?
Yeah.
If we're generating three hundred in the tip now, it takes five hundred to get water to the pony. We can figure that out. If you're telling us that two hundred grand of increased value in getting water all the way from. On to the pony, I would be shocked. But.
And we have a, you know, public engagement part of this leader, and that's, you know, we. Part of what we, we're doing in the public, uh, outreach is. Getting information from people about what they want to do with their properties all along the way. So that'll help inform that too, anyway.
And what I thought. Uh, maybe the, this skip here, uh. Potential development across ninety three there, well, that's why. Now where's the? Isn't that in the tip?
Yes.
So all that new value is gonna be part of the Tiff district.
Yes, yeah.
So. I'll venture to guess that that's the additional two hundred we need to get. Alright, thank you. This is your problem.
Um, so contract three, uh, the, the tank sites, um. So we've kind of gone through, uh, I would say, uh, three. S- significant comparisons, we've had a couple other sites that we at least looked at just based on elevation, we talked with property owners and didn't really get very far, so we. Ignored them, but, uh, the three main alternatives being the, um, the site just off Heather Lane. Um, on property owned by New Hampshire DOT. Uh, the second one, we're calling a Dow Road alternative, which, um, you, it utilizes that same property. Uh, New Hampshire DOT property that's west of ninety three. Um, both of those sites would utilize ground tanks, concrete tanks built on the ground, partially buried. Um. You know, limited visibility, well hidden, um. And frankly, lower cost maintenance. Um, the third site is, uh, uh, on the east side of ninety three. Um. And would require an elevated tank, so. Um, just kind of running through these three sites, um. There was some changes from the report I sent, so the, these costs are a little different, we had some. Uh, back checking of calculations and, and fire flows, honestly, so the, the, um. Heather Lane, alternative one, where the, this is the upper, uh, highest elevation tank, similar tank design is what you have. Already, um, it is the farthest away from three A, so it has the most linear footage of, of water main. And because it's further away, uh, when we looked at fire flows and trying to meet that fifteen hundred gallon a minute fire flow throughout the Tiff district. It actually requires us to increase the size of that water main to a sixteen inch rather than a twelve inch. Um. Uh.
And you guys at the original.
Yes, yeah, okay, three point two seven.
What's the next one?
Dow Road alternative, so that has.
Quarter million bucks.
Yeah, a sh- shorter, shorter distance of water main, uh, still sixteen inch. The challenge is here, I think, is it adds a second property owner that we would have to negotiate with to get an easement to, to run the water main through. And driveway through, so that we were avoiding, um, uh, Heather Lane, yeah. Um, both of those have directional drilling across ninety three to get underneath at Dow Road, even though we're on. A bridge there, uh, and speaking with DOT, they want us to sleeve, uh, uh. Um, sleeve the pipe through that intersection under the existing, um, bridge.
Under, under the highway?
Under Dow Road and under the highway, so.
Under every.
Yeah.
Not under the bridge.
So you're gonna go across under feet of highway?
Under the overpass.
Again?
Yeah, but it's like, so Dow Road is really narrow bridge, right, underneath ninety three. And they want us, they, they want us actually pretty much underneath the. Abutments for that bridge in order to stay out of their impact area. Um, so if they ever have to do anything to their abutments. In a future project, that's the water main isn't in their way. And then the three A site, so that's an elevated tank site, um. This actually changed as well because we had, uh, in the, in the estimate, I had only. Considered the, I had the composite tank, which is the most expensive of the elevated tanks. And I, um, went back through and compared, there are more or less three tank. Options for an elevated storage tank, we have what's considered a composite tank. Um, it's a, a concrete pedestal with a steel, um. Bowl at the top, uh, it's, it's less expensive to maintain because you have less. Uh, steel that you're painting. Um. It's a little more structurally sound in terms of stability, uh, but. Our site, you know, we have pretty solid bedrock that we'd be at, so it's not, that's not as much of a concern. Um, the second type is, is, uh, the least expensive for elevated, it's a multi-column tank. Um. Basically, the, the column in the middle is your water going in and out of the, the tank. Um, and then the third is a pedestal tank, and that pedestal, um, actually can provide a dry space inside of it, so you have. Um, kind of a working space in the bottom for valving and, and, um. Things of that nature, and that's kind of a mid between the two, so, um. We have a range of costs for this tank, it's, uh, um.
Well, for all the work at the tank.
Correct, yeah, so.
It's cheaper, this option's.
It is, it is cheaper, uh, you know, most of the cost, I would say you save money in. Water main, right, so compared to four thousand linear feet or thirty five hundred linear feet of water main, sixteen inch. Uh, because we're closer to three A, we have only eight hundred and fifty feet, and then, um. Also because we're close to the three A, you have less friction loss in that during a high fire flow event, so we can go to a twelve inch pipe rather than a sixteen inch pipe. Um. It doesn't require us to cross ninety three, so you don't have that directional drilling cost, and we know in that. That crossing of ninety three is gonna be in ledge from, from our borings.
How do you, how do you, how are you gonna get across ninety three?
You, you're gonna dig.
No, I mean, in this option, we're not gonna directionally cross ninety three?
No, so this, the, this tank is on the east side of ninety three, so we'll be running our water main down three A on the east side of ninety three. And you'll come off of three A onto the site to fill the tank and, and all that. Will happen on the east side of ninety three, and then we'll keep going, so then we'll keep going down. The, the main will keep going down Grandview, and then at Grandview. Our plan is to come down Carriage Road so that we get off of the bridge, and then we're gonna come under ninety three just north of the. Grandview Drive Bridge underneath with a directional drilling, so. In, in tank alternatives one and two, where we're using the west side of, of. I ninety three for the tank site, you have two crossings of I ninety three, you have the crossing in order to get to the tank, and then you have the crossing to get to Bo Mills.
And then.
Whereas on this.
Crossing in option three is a smaller crossing.
It's just, it's the one crossing that you're gonna have to do no matter what in order to get water to Bo Mills.
Alright.
So, um.
And how tall is this tank gonna be?
Sixty feet tall. So it's, it's got a thirty foot operating range, and then it would be, uh. Approximately sixty two feet, I think, is what we have to the top of the tank. From the, from grounds to the top of the tank.
Operating range means bottom of the tank?
So the tank, the, the bowl at the top will be like thirty feet tall, and you'll have a thirty foot stem. To get to it.
Right. So who's your pump?
So the booster pump, you know, uh, we've gone as far as we think we can to try and. Identify what needs to be served on this property from an elevation standpoint on raw land, what we don't know is finished floor elevations and things like that, so we. Plugged in a number, um. One, uh, a million and a quarter right now for the booster station.
That would just be the long.
It would serve, um, yeah, it would serve any elevate, right now, we, based on this. These boxes, which is very, you know, preliminary, I would say, we can serve the lower buildings. Without the booster station, it's the, it's the higher elevations with the residential units. And, and multi-stories that we have, um, challenge, and then there is some portion of the next lot that. Is at elevation where we would, the booster is, is needed, so, um.
So if that's a million bucks.
One point three five.
One and a quarter.
So, how much? Obviously, if we were picking it many years ago today, we wouldn't be putting a booster. Or get new users.
Yeah, you don't need it right.
Right, so not putting it in, um, how much is it? Cost later to add it back already?
Well, never cost, it's never cost less to do it later. It never cost. No, there's not an inefficiency there, no, no, it's a plug on the end, anyway, kind of.
It's gonna be, you know, when we're ready, when something with elevation needs to be built, it's a million and a quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is a- anything on three A needed boost pump? Or is that only, boost pump only Long Hill?
Oh, only Long Hill, yeah. Um. We've already talked about the Concord interconnections, um.
Then you get the map on the next group.
Yeah, the only thing I would say here, you know, we've. Contract five involves, you know, connecting to our contract two where we leave off and, and getting it to the town line. If, if we don't do an interconnect with the city, it doesn't really change anything here, it's still, you know, we bring water to the town line and we just don't. Connect the two systems, um, for contract six, you know, this, this really was. Uh, envisioned as a loop of Concord system, which already serves some properties on Hall Street. It would just extend, you know, through the intersection and then provide a service to, um, Creponi. If, if we can't do the Concord interconnect, we've got, you know, a couple of options where we come. You know, our water line is, is more or less right off the screen here, so we come down Carriage Road and across. And depending on, you know, how far we want to bring it, we can bring it as far as we want. Um, the other alternative is the coordination with New Hampshire DOT through the. Um. Redesign of ninety three and eighty nine, and there's, um, the preferred alternative right now has a local access road between. Bo Mills and Bo Junction, so we would, you know, tag on to that and, and run our alignment down that. Local road, so to speak, it could connect to. From the existing, from our extended, uh, bow system, now, you know, that would probably. Be an important component, regardless of whether you did, you know, carry it or not, I think you'd want to loop that system eventually anyway. So if and when that local road gets built, I think you would want to have a provision to put your water line in.
So, in the, in the estimates that we saw, it said thirty percent fourteen, sixty percent twenty nine. I had two quarters.
Uh, it's, it's probably. One is the thirty percent, does not, what we called thirty percent and what we called sixty percent.
So thirty percent was old?
Yeah.
And now with sixty percent, we know that also.
We, we know, we have more information, we've, we've. Refined our quantities to, to get better information and find, you know, these, the more detailed. Items, and then unit pricing has really started to kick in where we are getting better data on. Um, bids, and then using, you know, we also project using. Engineering news record projections to, to future, so we're trying to project this as a construction in twenty twenty four, really. Um, to, to give our best estimate of what it's gonna be then, um, but, you know. I think we're, we've kind of caught up with some of that inflation and craziness that happened in the last couple of years in terms of our unit prices. It's more, I think the unit prices have changed more so than our quantities, honestly. Um.
Which get what's happening the rest of the world.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, just kind of a highlight on what we've done, you know, what other stuff we've done, done geotech information, uh, throughout. The alignment to try and understand ledge quantities, that, that information is added cost in terms of knowing we have to deal with ledge and rock removal. Um. We did one wetland delineation throughout the project area, um, and we have, uh. For the most part, no real wetland impacts expected, other than. Uh, if we use the elevated tank site, we'll have a wetland crossing for the, um, driveway. So. Fairly, you know, minimal and, and not expected to, to cause any. Uh, concerns in terms of, uh, feasibility for that site.
Yeah, and I mentioned the public outreach, uh, we've. We've, uh, drafted a, an informa- informational website, so anybody from the public could. Look at that, get updated information on the project, we could. The, the link is shown on the screen here, but. How to get to that, uh, it's, it's draft, uh. How to get to that, uh, it's it's draft, uh, we're hoping to review it with with staff and um. Make sure we're good with the content there and then add any. You know, a bunch of the information we've developed before is already on the town website, but I, you know, depending on how we want to do it, we can put some of that on here. Um, so a little bit of coordination there, so that will be just. There available to the general public, and then the other important piece I mentioned is doing a survey of the property owners all along the way. Um, we we're looking to get two important pieces of information from them. Um, one is, do they do they wanna connect and two is, what is their, what is their? You know, visioned use, that is it just what's already there and what is that um in terms of flow? And um, if they have any expansion plans, then we wanna. Put in a water service that's the right size for that, and we want those that information on the gallons per day of flow. Because right now, but you know, without property by property input on the flow. We have some broad assumptions on the demand through the whole north end of the system. Um. That could affect the tank size ultimately. We we might, you know, if there's not as much demand as we've. Uh, as we've put in here without the information from the property owners, then we might, we might downsize the tank. Um, and and conversely, if if there's a lot more.
I'd rather. Yeah, I think there's a thing, you know, when you drive through this area, there's a lot of undeveloped hundred.
Yeah.
I, you know, it's not going backwards.
Yeah.
And a current property owner's vision for their property may be different than the next property.
And when you start looking at capacity for fire systems, you know, that takes a tremendous amount of.
Yeah.
Uh, so last time you were here, actually, it might have been a time ago, we authorized the second step of kind of the engineering work, which is what we're doing now. How many steps do you guys have? That you we've already kind of agreed to pay.
So we're about three quarters of the way through what you approved.
Okay, so what are what are the outstanding steps that we've improved?
Uh, the treat, we haven't done much on the treatment building, but we have a lot more, you know.
Do you like to do on that?
Um, uh, controls between the existing system and the new to. We haven't really done much on design of the integration of the controls. There's something, you know, there's. The the two tanks have to be integrated to each other and the. The the pumping system has to be modified. Um. Utility coordination is something we haven't uh gotten a lot of input from New Hampshire DOT. We did get a bunch of. Information from existing utilities on. Where their lines are, uh, but.
Uh, yeah, I think I think in terms of um. A big thing, we we've put existing utilities to the greatest extent possible on our plans, and we're avoiding them to the extent possible. There's some stuff where, you know, we're going to have to replace a drain pipe when we go by it, and we haven't, we haven't. Quantified every single one of those. We have, we have. Allowances in there for them, but we haven't figured out, okay, these are the. Four exact ones that we're gonna be replacing. Um, and then. If we, you know, looking at that tank site for the elevated steel tank, there's a a power line easement that we wanna coordinate some of that. Um, construction and. Needing a crane and things like that, and then having an elevated tank next to the state highway and how that integrates with with them. Um. We have some time that we would wanna spend on that, but still within our existing contract.
And so survey the property owners isn't in your existing contract?
It is.
It is, yeah.
Yep, that's a good point. Yeah, I mean, that's.
Cause to me, that's.
The public outreach.
Stuff isn't that exciting, you know, how how you make and what kind of shut offs you have. And how you lay out uh switches in in the building. I just assume you're gonna do that, right?
Yep.
You know, uh, I'm thinking, you know, public outreach is important to me.
Yes.
The survey is important to me, because that allows us to kind of make the final decisions that we have, which are what's that location to. And ultimately, uh, what can, how am I gonna line up these chess pieces of? Does the town agree with Chris's version, which is let's get water in Crumie because we because we twenty years, we're doing our promise to them. Or do we plan? And so those are, those are things that I think we kick off when you start doing public outreach and survey.
Yep, so we've drafted both of those, they're ready to go, but we, you know, obviously, we need to make sure the town's good with the content.
So let's do that for.
Ready to.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
Yeah.
Awesome.
We would, I mean, frankly, we we had time to get feedback, eh enough feedback, everybody's comfortable.
We're not gonna get citizen mind between Thanksgiving.
Right, no, we would be uh getting it out to people before Christmas, so.
Yeah.
If uh.
For for.
If people are.
Sessions that would happen in the new year. Is this gonna be like bring people?
These would be, so the the form of the survey would be um a combination of hard copy. Ones that we mail out and an online version that people can just get on and and complete.
And then for the part uh, so that's that's what you were talking about, is just a distributing market is the public comment?
Yeah, but we. That's that's so that would be, yeah, I mean, that would be property owners along, we wanna send. Something to every property owner along the route and have them send something back to us that says, yeah, uh. My.
I'm hooking up.
My I'm hooking up my water stinks, and I wanna, you know, I envision I'm gonna have a a four bedroom home connected.
And then when we have that is a great time to do what I think you're getting at, which is get get public meetings together to. Present those to people.
Yeah, okay.
And.
So I guess survey first and then.
Yeah, yeah.
So as far as the. As far as the website goes, um. You're right, we can have some of your information on our town website. Um, I haven't seen what you have put together, but I would imagine that we would want all of the information in one place, whether it's on our town website or on the website you created.
Right.
Make sure that all of the information is available for everyone to see.
Yeah.
They don't have to go searching for it into a couple of different websites, so just for ease and access.
What would be the easiest for them to build a website and provide a link to it?
That's definitely, yeah.
I'd be the best, you can keep it up to date for that.
So we've built the website, and the website's available for you guys to even look at now. There's probably. The stuff that you guys have already that we've already produced and you put on your website, we would need to probably take, if you want us to have that all on one site, we would. Put that on our site, but we don't have that in our, we don't have links to that in our site right now, but I mean, that's an easy thing to.
You can coordinate that, David.
Yep.
So our next, the expectation of the slide board is surveys go out for usage. Better adoption and where they find information next. Okay, that would be uh increased, there would be a price associated with maintaining that website.
Yeah, but it's in the big minimal scheme of things.
Yeah, it's minimal. Yeah. So I mean, I think I think we've got it covered for. First year, I would.
I would like to. David. Can you send this to the partners?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Alright, guys, this is awesome. What, is there any decisions other than what we talked about that you need tonight? Like tank placement, when when are you gonna need that?
Um, so, I mean, we we were, I think we're. Fairly prepared to say that we're our recommended tank site is the elevated steel elevated tank. But but I think the next step for us is to try and figure out. Lifecycle costs on each of the alternatives of those that site, and then. I don't think we wanna completely ignore the the lower head uh Dow Road site. Without at least knowing what the, you know, land acquisition costs are so that we can have still. Two comparisons for that.
Well, David, you haven't gotten any approval from the state yet on using that property, I think.
They need, what the state needs is now the next concept step. Report, whatever we did for the first one. They need that for the second. Here's what it is, here's what we're doing, here's what we're looking at, where we want it, how we'll access it. They they had asked to see that.
Okay.
Next step, so if we're ruling out one and we needed need to do two, I would think there'd also be a layer. Soon as possible, should go to the voters whose property we're gonna have to, or we'd like to drive through, which is again, same the same whole thing, property and components. Uh, we don't even know if they'll even entertain us though.
Well, we. But we have. We have powers, they have command. They don't, they don't get to entertain us if if this will be need for our water system. That's how, yeah. They're community partners, and I suspect that they'll be good community partners. This is what I'm in domain is for. What are the legal fees associated with that? Well, I I don't think we're going there. I think I think they're. It's a possibility. But it isn't, they get to say no.
Right.
They don't get to.
I think what you're talking about is making sure that you have um a side by side comparison to show. Um, that you really ruled out one or the other, or at least give the order of liberty, the opportunity to see. The cost comparison, the lifecycle cost and all of that, is that?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Um, and the main things are, we, you know, we can project the lifecycle costs for the different types of tanks. Um, but we need those conversations with the two, you know, we need some input from the landlord or some. What's? How the uh ac- access and land rights factor in them.
Yeah, because you for either site, you would need to factor in the possible lands.
Yeah.
Right, and.
Yep.
We don't have that for either site, either site two or site three, but.
Right.
Someone who would.
Or right.
Right, we don't, no.
And we have, uh, I mean, there's, there's a. There are some sort of standardized approaches you can do to come up with at least some type of valuation, ultimately. On an individual site, it's probably usually a um. Based on the appraised value within, and then the town's judgment on. Whether they're willing to. Do anything different than the appraised value of the land. Funding agencies say that, you know, when they're. Federal funding on a project like this, they would say. You know, we're only gonna reimburse you for the appraised value of it. So that's, you know, that's a potential approach, but so many agencies of transportation have a valuation. Sort of standardized format with, you know, based on a. What, how much of it is that they need, uh, temporary and permanent, and we could at least run it through that for comparison.
So you said we're three quarters of the way. Through the money we've already delivered.
Yeah, which was the sixty percent.
Percent. At one point. Are you gonna come back to us and say, hey? We move on to the next step there.
Well, we, I think we had, so we said that was supposed to go through April.
Yeah, I mean, I guess so our con- our our last agreement was uh. Yeah, well, it was signed, I think, January, and we thought it was gonna be twelve to fifteen months is what we put in there. So I think. You know, we would try and really stay stay with that target and and. In April, try and, you know, have have gotten as far through that sixty percent. Budget as we can to to get as much information as we can to keep the thing going forward. So some stuff will. Undoubtedly go beyond sixty percent because we know, you know, that's. Definitely gonna happen, but other things I think we're gonna need. More decision making before we want to move them far enough along that we wanna spend that money, so. I think um. Probably in in the spring, we would come back to you and say, we've we've spent. All the money that we have for sixty percent, and here are the here are the three things we want to move into. Hundred percent or ninety percent and get them to, you know, those are the projects we're gonna put out to bid or.
And you'd have the number then at that point, or did you?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think we put in, we put in a percentage. We put in a percentage for final design. Um, some of that final design, what's considered final design, I think is. Stuff we've already done.
Yep.
In that.
Yeah, if we could figure that out.
Yeah.
Great, because then we have to figure out how to pay for the the final. For that whole phase, and again, we've been using different proceeds.
Yeah.
Kind of what make sure we have.
Yeah.
In the bank.
Thanks, guys.
We would only, you know, we would, we would come up with contracts for final design only for the components that we want to get to final design, so those.
Yeah, it's the treatment and contract two and. You know, and right, and we know whether uh the interconnection is gonna happen or not, you know, that'll it'll make it easy to.
Also. This be something that. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so be prepared for that.
Okay.
I ask you to do that.
Okay. Yep, we can. That'd be a great time to do it.
That makes sense.
Especially if we could get an answer on. Concorded. We should be in really.
We're gonna be. They're they're only to crack us once we have our sister. I guess we're gonna support each other.
Yeah.
I'm hoping we know more about that.
Yeah, well, then I would think that the the development charge goes to zero because that's mutually beneficial to.
Too much politics. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Oh, they know we're gonna sign, I I mentioned that at the impact meeting, so.
See, guys, we're gonna do it without you.
That's great.
Anthony, you get for your assignment, thank. Pretty area, um, we're gonna be alright to take it out of, we'll take out whatever it's, I don't mind listening, you don't mind sitting here.
Guys signed off for uh, thank you. Don't rise and cross your feet, there was one. That wasn't included, the consent agenda, y'all signed it, but should amend that.
I think that is not, that's not a voteable thing, Bruce, that is part of a settlement agreement that's over.
We don't need. Well, we don't have on the record that it was part of the consent agenda that you died of. Um, so you say for the record, if you added that. Great. Well, we we go through, we're gonna have to amend that vote in the fourth item, is what you're saying. Uh, it's just a daughter eyes and cross the sheet, you 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 motioned the consent agenda, Chris.
That's not on the content agenda.
Right, it was supposed to be in there. It was an oversight.
Get it until after the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to have the uh PSA settlement uh in contention.
I will update mine second. All in favor?
Aye.
Most of. Alright, David, we're at the uh.
Yes. I just handed it out.
Uh, basically, it's all our project. Uh, those of you that were here or have heard. The planning board uh took a good long look at the proposal. Uh, at its meeting on Thursday, um, they've continued their review of the plan, uh, the proposal. To the December fifteenth meeting and on. Saturday, December third, they're gonna put up a balloon so you can look up and see where the top of the tower will be. Um, building facilities, storage, building slab being poured well tomorrow. Our new director, uh, as you guys know, her first day was Wednesday, and she jumped right in and I and already glad to have her on the team. She's already started to. Jump right into some problem, problem solving mode uh. At this point, so she's doing, and then finance your work that have been distributed. And the first work session will be a week from tonight, on the twenty ninth. That is all.
If you wanna add the right to know policy.
Oh, yes, thank you, yes. Uh, remember a while back, we. Eric Mayer had raised a concern with the the number of right to know requests that we're getting and said he's had the most, and some were just police reports that need to be on. So we finally worked out the program, the plan to. And some were just police reports that need to be on. So we finally worked out the program, the plan to. That will hopefully eliminate a ton of those that just consider to be police reports that are. Picture it through the police department. That'll be uh December first.
Is there a motion on the minutes from November ninth, two thousand twenty two? Tell me. Any discretion on the minutes? Anyone? All in favor? Uh, aye, propose. Mr. Foot. First, you said that ended up.
Last, you want to kind of do it. Anthony foot three logging hill road. Exit one.
No, the uh. Based AI, no. He was gonna get back at you.
Right.
Right.
Except for a few cell checks, but yes, exactly the same last time.
Can I get that? So you're talking about all the property that's east of ninety-three right now? Is that what you're talking about?
And this, I would wanna probably be a scope of anybody in the area of the development involved. I mean, right now, I'm working on logging hill and South Street, people that I know, Carolosa.
Right.
The mobile station, uh, you know, just for input, make sure that everybody's informed of what's going on.
Cause, cause you've seen the modified K, right?
I've seen all the plans.
That comes onto the, onto the Colby property, the exit, come right onto it and go.
I've seen it proposed, yeah, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, and that's, cause that's what the basis of the selectmen's. Uh, support for the project was, you know, Chris and I met and Matt with a couple of the. Commissioners and directors and and. The last piece they shown was, it's it's they're making combinations to put the exit and cell phone uh.
Right, but that's if the town puts a road in.
And it would be a town road from where it is now to that.
So Gene hasn't been briefing that in the last two meetings I've been to, but it's been in the background.
Yeah.
Maybe as a side note, but nothing's.
I just didn't know, cause I didn't know what parcel you were, I I didn't know if you're talking about again, the other side of the highway or.
No, I was, my my view on this is anything that has to do with Bo around exit one, it's any of the property owners, any of the businesses. Um. Pitco, Blue Seal Feed.
Any comments?
Um, we have a community development director who we take. Actually, um, I take charge of the community's best interest in all community development. Um, I would expect that. Our community development director would be in charge of. Exit one and and coordinating this contract and being the voice of the town. Rather than the citizen committee. And I would expect that our community development director would be opening to getting. Communication from concerned abutters, um, concerned community members, but. It is my view that. This is something that is entirely within your purview rather than.
It's a development to my commission of. It's got to, that's correct.
Not to any great extent.
Right, right.
Um, I I I think I'd love to see more uh citizen support or and or involvement in any of these projects. Uh, especially this big project with exit one.
If if I could say something, what Angela brought up is, I've been tracking this since, what, twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen. My paper was drawn, I mean, the sketch that I put out was drawn that long ago and I probably. Count on one hand the number of times Matt Taylor reached out to me as a probably centerpiece of the intersection to say, hey, what do you think about this? So I personally can tell you right now that there has been no community involvement. And matter of fact, usually we get it secondhand sometimes up to this point. So I think. If anything, I helped put together, I'm starting a phone rock, their email list to everybody and I'll kind of be, if I get the right people, we'll have a small group that'll help.
And I think your proposal, Andy, you're you're suggesting this committee just uh sit with the town.
Absolutely.
To reach out to these people.
If anything, I even tried just talking to uh Ken Levins about possible other ideas that haven't been entertained yet or been brought up. I I just think that we've had a single vision and almost to me, and I I've always, was always told, don't ever do anything in a vacuum. And I don't know, I mean, obviously I haven't been on all the committees, but I feel sometimes when MJ and. Gene gets up and speaks, he doesn't, they do their thing and their little piece, but they don't come talk to the residents in the community to see what we want, what best needs fits our needs here. And we're talking about waterline down to three A, Groupon would be great, but if if that area where the two clover lease are was not there.
That's what I was talking.
If that's gone and that's open mixed use land, you put business in there, then we're talking waterline and huge tax increase, but. That's never been addressed and never been entertained by MJ. It's like, nope, we're not doing this. Like, why? If that best benefits Bo, and I could be downstairs with a new entrepreneurial business development, I could see that happening too. But somebody needs, someone who's been here probably needs to be, I'm thinking myself, restart, communicate that. From my point of view, if this outline that I have in my hand is being asked to go on, I'm not willing to vote on this. I think the suggestion that uh that as a town, we're gonna adopt a failed power plant. Or that we've no way offered to expect a commercial tax base is offensive to me. And if.
Is there something that says power plant?
How follows up from MJ has to, no solution to diminish tax base from our failed power plant. Oh. We have a, we have a taxpayer in town, a commercial private prop company who purchased our power plant and is continuing to operate it. And I'm not gonna, except for a second, that's a failed power plant, that the current plan for uh ninety-three expansion. Didn't take into account at at all the future tax base. You know, to the extent that at some point, this wants to come back to us and say, we'd like to get input from our residents about their their thoughts and concerns regarding. Uh, ninety-three expansion, I'd be more than happy to support that, but not something that is politically charged to this.
And it's my understanding that this part of the um I ninety-three project. DOT and the product managers, part of their next steps are public hearings. Um, that are supposed to be, can, there's supposed to be one for Bo as well, to provide an opportunity for. Community members, abutters, to voice their concerns, not as representatives of the town, but as. Their own personal interests, um. Which would seem like a good avenue rather than um.
That's a good point. They brought it up, they were gonna be down this fall, but they were supposed to be in the fall, we're in November. They haven't been yet and every time.
Calls in the commissioner's office since the beginning last year.
And the other concern that I have actually is. The other concern. I think COVID delayed budget, but not seventy today, the budget. Uh, we have had a public hearings. In fact, you've been there, you presented your view of uh flyovers.
I have.
And on ramps and off ramps several times. I have, and I, you know, the problem I see is that one person doesn't get anything done. One person gets stepped on by somebody in the meeting that says, we've already done this. I've had the jugs come in here a couple of times. And kick it down and kick it down the road, like they've taken care of it. I think that it takes a group of people that are concerned about this. That's why I wanted to get a charter committee formed to help. A group get a voice, because one person doesn't get a voice. And this is, we're talking about the residents, for me personally, it's the residents around it. If it says power plant is politically charged, that's not it. Power plant is a tax loss, so you can, there's no doubt about it. That's. Difference between revenue lost from, historical revenue lost from our coal power power plant to our failed power plant. As a politic, this select board to be voting on. A failed.
I can delete, if you want me to change the wording, Chris, I can do that. That's not a big issue.
We were given this two weeks ago.
And you didn't reread it until tonight? Uh, I didn't, oh, I didn't see it.
But it also provides.
This two weeks ago, correct?
Yes.
And also, I also, Chris, outside of that comment, are you remiss to having citizens be involved in something as big as a change?
I'm happy to have citizens involved. But I'm not gonna have one, I'm not, I'm not, the four of you can vote on it all you'd like. I'm not gonna vote on one that's politically charged like this. How we can get that they weren't involved in the other public hearings, both here and at DOT. Which I sat through is isn't fair. They were. We talked about alternatives. We talked about. How we're gonna access three A, whether or not we're gonna maintain which which route to three A we were gonna maintain. Residents, did you speak to? You were there. Which residents did you speak to? I, I, I did with DOT public hearings that I attended. Right, they didn't ask for an input, they just told us what they're gonna do.
Uh, beyond, beyond um what uh phase or what design DOT actually ends up going with. I would think a committee that's focused on the future development around exit one, possibly think for the town.
Correct.
Because um when you can get, especially the local businesses in those areas and the landlords in that area are gonna develop it, once. DOT decide, ultimately, it'll be DOT and federal highway deciding what is being used. I want, I'd like to have the committee already in place so that they can help our planning department. Figure out what's needed on a local basis for our roads and access points and zoning and planning. To get us the best benefit to the taxpayer out of plan development of these parcels that are gonna be affected by that. So. I, I um.
The wording.
I would, I would, I will, I'll agree with Chris, I wouldn't support this, where I support the committee. Um, but I think a very basic charge, um, maybe a paragraph long that they would, um, or the effect that they would, uh. Coordinate the landowners and especially the businesses in the area of exit one. Um, and make recommendations to our our planning department or help assist the planning. We were very small planning department. And once um the ninety-three, ninety interchange starts, it comes pretty fast. Um, I'm doing a lot of work with the exit four A and London area and dairy, which have a lot bigger planning departments and. To some extent, you know, they're getting overwhelmed now with the work starting, so. Um, I I will support, I guess, a simpler version of committing to help those property owners. Get information to us without having to wait for a public hearing. Yeah.
So, and let that, Bruce, if I could ask one thing, this been Matt brought the point of, I put this in two weeks ago, is it now? You, I handled the same thing out there, buddy.
Andy, when you brought this in two weeks ago, I had thought at that discussion and maybe I thought it didn't verbalize it enough. Um, or maybe it was, you know.
I only say.
But not understood, but I thought we were gonna get a simpler version.
Well, you were gonna review it. I, and I haven't had any input from, so what I, maybe I could ask enough to keep kicking it down the road every two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. Could you review it for me, each of you, and make your input of, if I, I don't care, the power plant was a, was a comment to help. They say that we need to generate more.
Like I have on other mini drafts, I'm helping, I'm happy to uh work with anybody.
And if you have concerns.
Simplify my, just so we can get this role.
It also seems like. And correct me if I'm wrong, that you wanna move, you want the town to move forward with your design. Design and I don't, I mean, you have a proposed approach in here that is RFPs. Um, drafted for release in January twenty twenty-three with bids to be submitted by the end of the first quarter. Finalist uh for finalists for consideration select board, May twenty twenty-three, with a goal of construction beginning in twenty twenty-three. If state is not going to begin on this in twenty twenty-three, that this project is. Twenty plus years in the making. It has been discussed and considered.
Been in the making since the nineteen eighty.
Gross, it has that part. It's, it's coming to the end, it's gonna be.
Um, just like, and just so you know, Andy, it's. I'm uh, I wanna make it clear, I support a committee that helps out our planning department, especially. But just as I had the same concerns, was it a month ago when we did the solar field committee?
Coming forward with our.
They gave us a charge that when I read it, it acted like we already committed to a solar field and we made it clear, no. We committed to you looking into it. So just similarly, I wouldn't agree to uh a committee charge that is like committing us to a certain way to go. I am all for. The the people that own businesses and and developable land around exit one, they know best. Um, maybe you've lived in a lot of businesses around the brand is, so I would love a committee that. You know, helping our small plane department go out and get that information back, um, so especially with whatever ends up. Um, with the um, you know, DOT's plans, I mean, I worked for them for a long time.
Okay.
And they put out the plans and you don't know what the final is until it's actually built, so.
Right.
I would, I I'm for that and I'm glad, I'm more than happy to help. Grab some more simplified language.
So to help, I was gonna say to help with Angela and Chris's concerns, how do we, can you make your edits on it in circular areas you find other than the PowerPoint? If there's things on it that need to be changed, that I correctly.
Correct, yeah.
It says, you know, we impede this committee to look at and make recommendations or raise concerns as it relates to. Ninety-three expansion and optimizing commercial development, appropriate work development in the area.
I mean, and as far as communication with businesses, like was already mentioned, we do have a business development committee that.
I'm actually signing up to join with them, so.
Be a subcommittee to have the discussions about. Exit one businesses, you know, I I think there's. There are things in place that already exist that create opportunities for discussion about this.
We have things in place, I agree with Angela, but they're not working. Because I'm getting a lot of calls from other people in that quarter that don't have, and not just businesses. There's a lot of residences on logging hill that are gonna be impacted. So, um, you know, I get what you're saying, but. We have a lot of people in town concerned about exit one that despite everything we have out there, aren't getting the message.
Yeah, well, it it it's a business, the public committee, we don't reach out to any of those businesses. And talk about exit one, you know, we just don't.
Right.
We meet once a month, once a month for half an hour, forty-five minutes. And we may see some of these design plans and things, but. Outside of that, nobody other than myself with Matt Taylor has been going out to businesses and it had nothing to do with X one, it was just more of a.
But just about now, since the select, I'm not sure what time. There's been a, I don't know if it's just the word we leave it now, but it's seen people are more enthused and engaged in um. Working on something like this, if it's more focused, whereas with our existing. Uh, committees aren't as focused and you can't, the people are gonna go, some people don't wanna go to a meeting and. Listen to an hour of stuff that doesn't do a little aspect that I want. So it seems to me, it's in my experience, it's like when these committees are seen. Are getting more people involved, so.
So I'm happy to help you shrink it down. Put out the next agenda and revise it and go from there.
All right, if you, if I gladly take some input for the revision.
Yeah, can you meet with our new planning director?
Absolutely.
She needs.
How we can interact between basically citizen.
Reporter.
Yeah, it's what's beneficial to her.
Yeah, because she is the representative of the town and.
I wanna make sure, and this converted activity, yeah, not the, it's not just nothing happening, you know, this. We've been talking to the concert group, the company already, we've been talking with flatly. Uh, on what we want there, so just kind of be careful, cause not a lot of companies also. Want anyone to know that they're looking around.
And it may be something in working with our new community development director that she creates a space that is. Send me your input on this and I will take that and figure out what the best. Move going forward, you know, something like that, where she has some kind of meeting um with community, interested community members rather than. Citizen committee.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy.
Police detail, free heat increase, page seven nine, and we work. Little promotion on this or?
Uh, no, but it's uh just a, or a motion, I guess, but it's a motion, we have to set a public here. So, so this is to talk about. What, um, the only question I had is, does the board want to, you now see that if we go in the. Um. On Jeff's analysis, page nine. Uh, that if we, if the board wanted to go ahead with the request to raise the up, the pay rate to sixty bucks. Um, we'd be collecting eighty twenty-one or we'd be, it'd be costing us eighty twenty-one. Uh, to pay them that and um it would drop our administrative cruiser fees down to four seventy-nine. So what I would wonder is if we wanted, you know, we covered with the eighty-five barely. And do we wanna increase it? Would we propose increasing it to ninety or ninety-five? Cause we've reduced our administrative cruiser fee down to nothing.
I think, I think it's a couple of things we need to be aware of here. One, none of our officers are required to do official details. If they do not before them, and we're competing with other community and the state police for that. Uh, additionally, we're in a town right now where we, we have not been fully funded, uh, fully staffed.
Uh additionally, we're in a town right now where we, we have not been, had a fully funded, a fully staffed police department. Uh and I mean fully staffed without FTO officers in all of the years I've been a select. I don't think we've ever had a fully staffed police department. I think incentivizing uh more adoption of. Extra detail officers now uh is a bad idea. In fact, a couple of years ago, I think we actually eliminated.
And we did during COVID, we were full staff.
And though I'm, I'm kind of saying that we have not made um CPI adjustments in, in a bit. Uh that needs to be, cannot be done in vacuum, can't be done in the vacuum for total cost um. And I, I would, I would prefer we put this off and not uh break a poker.
I, I thought when we went over this last time it was here, um but you were gonna come back with this, cause on these. Alright, when we put the, goes, he goes out with a cruiser, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And the fuel is picked up by part of that fee, correct?
Yes. Yeah, that's how I run it for an hour.
Fuel's gone through the roof, um if anything. The way it's proposed now, we're going further in the hole um on this detailed thing, plus it's taking officers away from our patrols. Or I would like, mind myself, I don't have enough information here to see what set the number should be, cause I guarantee the number should be higher. Um just to cover the erratic cost of having that.
Yeah, a- again, what we have currently, Jeff had provided this, is we charge eighty bucks a night.
Mm-hmm.
And then again, right, the fifty to fifty, whatever, that's all, that's all set, that's what we're paying them, it's that. So, you know, administrative cruiser fees, so what I, I gather you're saying is this. At least even take a look at the ninety-one and see if that's even adding.
Right.
Without changing the rate of.
Without even changing the rate of pay, cause. All every year with the rate we have, just.
Right.
Because of that increased cost for the cruiser sit-down.
Oh, so what are these comparables to what other towns do?
Now, I haven't seen.
The only thing that they gave us was off their pay rate, they didn't.
They didn't give us the, the detail rate.
Well, when you, you, you increase the rate. So if you go up by seven fifty on their officer paid rate, pay rate, we, yeah, you're going backwards.
But any other, you have to understand, there's a thirty percent retirement charge there, so going up seven bucks as in the two fifty of retirement.
Right.
Uh on a five dollar increase.
Needs a lot more information. Raise it anyway to cover the deficit we've been going into since we haven't raised in so many years, giving the boss of the cruiser loan.
But the thing is, the, these people using the detail can hire an out-of-town cop. They're gonna get a day trooper, they're gonna sheriff, they can hire another cop. Well, not, sometimes they can't hire, some of these details require cops. Um, you know, if you raise that number to a hundred, you may find that we don't have any extra.
Mm-hmm.
Let's get some more data.
Thanks, well. And wouldn't take an officer off duty to serve on a detail, this is over and up. No, yes, this is over. Again, as they're working X number of shifts, they've already worked, the overtime they take one of these, they're exhausted, do they wanna come in and fill a shift?
Right.
And also, it's a four-hour minimum, and so they, it may not be great rate, but sometimes they go up for an hour and you pay four. Right.
All right, uh tree removal publicity center, select.
We already voted.
It looks like. That's our, sorry.
Maybe October twentieth email, Mike.
Okay, I'm just. Mr. Bull. Yeah, to him look at it, to responded on what trees he would suggest, which are the exact ones that. I believe uh Ted was suggesting we took down, um I might suggest that we do a public hearing on it, see if uh. Or make a motion that we put a public hearing out to publics.
I think that's an awesome idea, man. My inclination was uh. In generally kind of opposed to cutting down trees without getting people who are gonna be impacted, primarily the Heidi Lane folks. Um there are people in Heidi Lane who back right up to the public safety building. Uh and there is a, there is a buffer uh between the building and, and Heidi, but um this is on the, I understand. But.
I think a public hearing is good because there's been a lot of input and a lot of use of the gazebo area, so why not do a public?
No, so I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing, it's not discussing that small group of trees.
I'll see you though. You did get an email, right, today from Eric Anderson. Awesome, okay.
Yeah, and I really appreciated the photo documentation that he provided in his email, it really illustrated. Um what we would, um, so thank you, Eric Anderson.
Well, recite playground.
Wait, please, can we finish that?
I'll be seconded.
You have not had a motion on it, for.
All right, no discussion on a public hearing, or all favor, I oppose.
Thanks, so Chris and Darcy, Darcy's been working on, on this project, they put out a RFP, they have responded. They've taken a look, they've met the form throughout it, all they would like to go up. Go and pick one certain contractor to work with, Chris can explain that to you. And the plan is to have this uh paid for uh by uh the revolving. And certainly, Darcy also, I guess tonight you got a, her letter of support or why or. His wallet from Alicia uh. And Darcy is away, kind of well deserved. Vacation, so Chris is.
So I'll have to leave it to the two letters that you have as far as the merits go, I can, um, I can answer questions as far as. They're on the third page that I handed out tonight, there, no, no, on, there's a separate piece of paper, Bruce, no, no, it's on your binder, it's on your desk. On the third page.
Uh, is it the letter of Darcy? Third page of.
Third page in the binding?
No. I threw it on your desk tonight. Yeah, here you go. So the, uh, the existing athletic field, it's gonna go in the rear of that.
Which is already against in.
Correct, yeah. When we first looked at this, we were gonna put it where um the back entrance or the front entrance, depending on which. The both center road entrance, uh where the two tetherball are, we were gonna put it there, but. We determined that engineering and construction costs were gonna be too great, and since the field was already relatively level. It was gonna uh substantially reduce our site, site work um use. We have not, um, I have a, an application with David right now, uh, cause we're looking at getting a um. Um, a waiver, uh, uh, what is a waiver, um?
They wanted that temporary driveway permit.
For construction purposes.
From both center.
Uh and then um I've got a driveway permit with the state. As far as the playground goes, though, we have not talked to the neighbor, it's all within the uh property setbacks. Um.
No, I just, I remember, and maybe we can at least check. It is a new neighbor. But if we could just check the original approval from the planning board that the more than that when they built.
Oh, okay.
Cause I remember significant discussions about what was gonna be over there and restrictions.
Okay.
And it understood they don't necessarily buy that the town, that the town owns its own room, but. Um I think if we could just confirm that and see if.
I can check with Barry tomorrow.
Barry, based on the prior approvals, we're very concerned with the neighbor.
Okay.
Um and um I assume that once this is involved, if I was to first, on the slides or stuff.
The ones that are age appropriate, yes.
Yeah, Chris, you go, the four of us, Chris, he can go first, um, so I, I have some concerns about this, you know, we, we're doing well with that facility. Um and now we're gonna turn around and spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In a year that obviously Saturday, we talked a lot about it being our last lean, really lean year. And if we've got money in revolving fund, that kind of money in revolving fund, why aren't we putting it back to our spending rate? So having said that, um, my other concern is celebrating children is licensed by the state. Not, it doesn't fall into the periphery of the town, correct?
Uh.
No, so they were relations they no longer are, they no longer. It's a town program, but that alleviates the, the town requirement on anything over a certain height for playgrounds. So hopefully that takes care of that, um, they haven't had a playground there for thirteen years. So now all of a sudden, we're gonna throw a playground, playground is, um, I know they've been using it across the street, but um. I'm just, I, you know, if we've got that kind of money sitting in our revolving fund, eh, the other thing, last thing is the numbers. So the grand total is one twenty-four, nine thirteen, you, there was also some donated money, is the one twenty-four, nine thirteen less the donated money? Where, where we did a hundred fifty thousand?
I believe the hundred fifty is out of a revolving fund, which in her letter includes the ninety-seven sixty-two of the donated.
So it's more like a hundred and sixty thousand we spent.
No, it'd be a hundred and forty, a hundred forty thousand, two hundred thirty-eight.
And that, and yet this, this thing here says one twenty-four, nine thirteen.
So this includes some site work, um depending on what we get back for um the um. The waiver from the zoning board for the, in the state for a second driveway, uh we need a, we need a construction driveway. Regardless, just because of where this is on the property, there's no way to get up there anywhere else, cause it's such a, uh geographically, it's um challenged. So there's money, if we need to move the driveway further north, uh we'd have to take, take out some trees. Uh it would require more site work, and then the other thing is that we have to remove a section of the fence. We're probably gonna put a gate in, so that second, that construction driveway, if you will, uh may stay somewhat permanent. Inside, not necessarily as a, as a driveway cut, uh but we can put, bring equipment in and out, uh we don't have the cost for that. One of the reason why we wanted to put up to a hundred and fifty thousand is for those reasons, but also uh we wanna get on the manufacturer's schedule. Uh because they put the order in as they get it, and right now we're looking for, looking at late June, early July. Uh the earliest that we can put a contract together in, we might actually be able to bump that up into early June, uh late May. Is what ideally the situation would be.
So ultimately, well, first off, I'm gonna disclose my son willing goes to. For retro program, and I don't think I benefit any more than any other in the town, so I'm gonna keep being heard on this. Uh I love the idea, I'm so proud of what Darcy saw with the program. Uh the data points that I'm missing are how much money we have in revolving fund last year right now, how much money we have in the revolving fund this year right now. I wanna see that we have a hundred fifty thousand dollars new, so I, I don't have that here presented. Uh two, uh absolutely, we have to talk to the neighbor next door. Um they know, order, getting an order in for a particular equipment that they're gonna oppose. You know, build a town of gold, doesn't have to go through the planning process like a regular citizen was. As a select, we've always acted like right citizen, and I think we, we owe that discussion to happen. Uh two, and three, um I believe if we made three or four calls, that we could get someone to put the site work. And the road in as a gift to the town, that we, we know some people who have bulldozers, excavators and dirt. And I wouldn't wanna commit to a hundred fifty thousand dollars without first calling oddly and Merle and. Bruce and finding out who might have access to a bulldozer.
We, we gladly stepped up in the past for other projects, so.
We raised all of the money for the Wildcat Habitat in about four weeks. Four years ago, five years ago now, um I just make some calls.
And I was still going to donate to this, 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 but like with the change in where the money was coming from, I still don't know where it ended up. That's right, remember, we were, we got the donations, we weren't sure how we were going to allot those, so uh, yeah, I'm, I'm all for it, don't get me wrong. I just, I'm trying to be devil's advocate.
No, you, you answered, you, you asked questions that we didn't think to answer prior to.
So I think, let's bring this back in, if it's okay with everybody else, I think we, we owe it to bring it back in two weeks with those three answers.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I especially wanna know what the fund balance is.
Yeah.
One year over year. Um.
Well, um.
Knowing Darcy and shorty.
I'm sure they're thinking top of it, but I'd like to see that.
Yeah, unfortunately, she's not here, so.
Um.
Awesome.
That would've been.
I wish we knew that's why you were here, if we could've done it sooner than later.
That's fine.
And you're gonna long drive, so.
No, I, it's back to concrete for the night.
Oh, oh, I thought you were going up.
Oh, no, yep. If I, if I was going up north tonight, I would have.
Don't wander off. Number six, athletic field uses both soccer club.
Oh, the fees.
Um, I know, thank God, I, I don't have.
That's not me, sorry, Bruce.
No, but you were a part of a discussion we had about with these, remember maintenance of the fields, that's what this.
Oh.
You heard all day on for the second half, the second part of this year.
Right, but you, David, you said they were many times telling me that they were um. Cause they're doing more maintenance or something, I think we're doing this.
Yeah, what I, what I recommend is, be- because we, we just keep going back and forth. I thought we did too, but it's still. Well, stick with what we have, or we just come up with a way where they ever agrees, I don't know, so. Ever agree that they should pay anything, I know, again, five dollars a head is not a lot.
We literally heard on Saturday, they need forty thousand dollars to pay someone to maintain these fields to, to try and start getting them back.
Right.
Asking for eight hundred dollars from uh. You know, without a motion to waive the fees, I think this issue's been addressed.
Yeah, I just would, yeah, David, in fact, I didn't know, I, I, that was in the spring, we all met, and I thought you guys were gonna work on. What the costs were for the field so that we could reassess at some point.
And I'm not trying to deflect, unfortunately, that part of discussion. Uh one of the, one, I think some of the confusion is that Tim and I deal with two different parts of the fields.
Right.
Tim deals with all the fields, the field stuff, I deal with the structures.
Right.
And then, and then Darcy uh handles some of the um reimbursement from, so I, I unfortunately, I don't have any firsthand knowledge of what you're asking.
So David, those three need to be, you need to coordinate those three, so we can get a firm number on it going forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyhow, Chris. All right, all right.
There's three more that came in since that report.
Since, since the seventeenth.
Yeah, we've received. One of them in particular is a pretty good-sized undertaking that we've been asked for all the wetlands.
Oh, no shoes on the offense.
Types of records and it's, it's, it's on the list, but we're still trying to struggle with. And working with Eric Mayer on how to address this, cause you can, I mean, one of the requests basically is, all right, everything between two thousand twelve, say. Two thousand twenty-two, I want anything that had to do with any kind of. Activations, cup permit, that, 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 so it's like, do we, you know, are we obligated to look at it? Or can we just say, there are files, you can figure out and look through what you want.
Well, but it's all public, we literally, it's part of our.
Yeah, but, oh, absolutely, it's just. There's no way for us to go through, like, all the file cabinets and go, okay, this is related to a cup.
But under ninety-one A, what you're saying is, you gotta be pretty specific, cause you can't do a catch-all.
And that's, and that's. Well, that's the letter that went to her, uh, based on input, was you need to narrow it down. Basically, the response has been, oh, no, I said what I wanted, so it's going back to Eric to try, but it's.
Sure, all the file cabinets are twenty-five cents.
Yeah.
And any may has um great information about um. Now you wanna request?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Then we're quite, we're talking.
Uh, the, uh, the lady called me.
Just two requests.
Yep, there's two, two different timeframes.
But anyway, so what were the other, we just got, I can't remember the.
Uh, it will be moved as of December first, but one was an accident report. One is an open investigation with the police and the other one was um. Building permit information downstairs.
Okay, so I thought we eventually discussed it, we're not gonna, so I'll reveal.
Well, I just say police report.
Yeah, no.
You won't see any, they will not be right to know.
Yeah, that's why I said it's gonna be a moot issue.
Yeah.
Uh, who did the coronavirus state?
Yes, I have a couple of uh. New ideas that I'm kind of looking for or recommending, so if you start at the top. Project twenty-three, the board had said to add that, the local to both side.
Sure.
Twenty-four is record scanning, cause as Tanya and I finally are getting a handle on how this Doc Start thing works. I, I, I hope that it had been done with another apartment, but it hadn't, uh anyway. It was the town of Hollis, they have a full-time IT director who guy, has guided them through, and she said it's been a five-year project. To get their town records in, and what she does is they put twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year in. To have them optically scanned, but it's, but you still need to go through and obviously we need to go clean them up first. Cause they'll just print whatever, a copy and you have, so um. Cause they'll just print whatever, a copy in that you have, so um. You know, as we put together the budget, it's either, I, I mean, I would recommend that to really get that started and going, is that we use the art funds for our first. Round of um copying or digitizing.
Um, I'm more for giving the digitizing.
Yeah.
And this program allows public access, so you can put it on the, the website, and all the documents that have been scanned of any resident can look up this.
So, so what's got it ready to start with?
We're gonna start with downstairs.
So you're gonna start with going through their filing cabinets one by one, scanning their data.
Yeah.
And you're gonna clear up four out.
Before.
They have to go through the files and take out the stuff that isn't.
It doesn't have to be retained, uh.
And then are you going to hire a consultant to do the scanning?
Yeah.
Going to R P?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
And they gave us a recommendation as well.
Yeah, but I.
I know.
I wanted to go out to bid, because anyone with a good partnership can do this one, there, there are, there are. Uh uh discovery management firms, that this is what they do. All day long, millions of documents.
I have a question, um what kind of indexing is going along with it, because um. You can scan them, like, like you said, Chris, but the thing is that for someone to, like, what search capabilities do you have? Or is it gonna be indexed by project, by um by uh lot number, you know? I, there are a whole lot of different ways, because you can have things.
I'm sorry, you can have more than one way of searching it, so we can do it by all of those things that you just said, we can set it up so that you can search it by parcel. You can search it by property owner, you can search it by address, you can.
Once you get the document, you can search it by word.
Anything.
Yeah.
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 Anything that, yeah, that's exactly.
That's what's great.
As long as it, it's set up.
But my iPhone will now take a, I could take a picture of this desk. And it would always see, the picture would be O C R for what's on this desk. Like, that's crazy.
But it's a good idea, anything else want to do?
Um, the old town hall ventilation on the bottom of buildings and facilities. Uh see, we should have made Chris stay, uh but he's looking at uh. The last two bits of the old town halls to put a fire alarm system in and a ventilation system. And again, instead of putting this into the operating budget, it's similar to a municipal building air exchange, so. And again, these are just kind of placeholders to show you the newer things that we have.
I did, on both those topics, um it's like, Old Town Hall is like a, a gap by a million cuts. You know, we've, we put in, took out the heating system, put in gas, put in. This stuff, insulated floors, the, the. Twenty five thousand dollar alarm system, like, put in a ring doorbell, put in a.
Is less than twenty five thousand, I think twenty five. Is it ventilation and the alarm system?
Yeah, that's the way, again, I just threw in twenty five thousand, because I don't have a firm estimate for them, but I'm just, you know, I'm looking more. But. But.
I know the alarm system, just having um heard a little bit about it, is. An entirely like wireless system that would communicate directly with emergency services. Um because at Old Town Hall, there's no cell service. Um so if there was a fire from one of the many events that are held at Old Town Hall where there's cooking involved. Um there's no, there's no way to get a hold of emergency services, so this alarm would automatically send a signal to. And communicate with the emergency services to make sure that.
And that one is in the operating budget, it's under review. Um the game of security upgrades, this is for our water. System and sewer system, operating system, we need to uh. Prevent cyber attack, we need to do an upgrade. Uh unfortunately, our s- our system is too small to qualify for a grant that we had looked at. Um the grant would cover the study that you need to do, which we already had done, uh but. Um we, we won't get any grant money for that, so that's twenty thousand dollars that we, that we don't have in our water system.
But our water and sources should be self-funded, right?
Sewer is, the water, the water's barely.
Okay, so let's pay for this out of the self-funded water system. Water sewer system, right?
Is there money to cover it?
Man, we can, let me try, we would plug it in, and if we can.
The whole idea is that this system shouldn't be self-funded, and we should be charging an appropriate rate for our water and sewer fees to do that. Like, at this point, we, we're now at the point where it's, if we need to add a penny, or add a penny, let's do it and start. Having a self-sufficient system, no different than.
So I agree, but I mean, I'm, what's going, would you try to do this for the uh?
But I know we talked, while we talked with the uh upgrades.
Yeah.
Uh I know we talked about the last uh meeting.
It's like an imminent thing, or?
Yeah, within the next few months, but I'll do a little more work on that. And then that, that was the only new idea.
What about outstanding progress?
Not just updated from the last.
We're gonna talk about one of them.
We still have a few we need to do.
Number four, stream at one pine crisscross page from three twenty four.
Yeah, somehow, there was a page, part ten. That was up in earlier, but that's about the stream.
No, but his email has.
It's in there. That's both answering. Why that was there, okay. So what Tim, Tim did is he went on a search and found that, you know, these are just seasonal. Over whatever.
Do you have a copy?
Stream.
I did see it, actually, yeah, it's happened to me.
But, but what I read from this is that there's no blockage or nobody, nobody sucking the water on for.
No rain.
The, the stream at my house has been dropping, we're relatively.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I told the woman that I, I listed you and that I would go take a look, because I think Tim drove by. I think she was concerned with the, there's so little water that it's pooling on her. Property there instead of flowing off, so I don't know, I told her next week I would go take a look at it.
Uh I guess I'm, I don't understand Sandy, it doesn't get to a certain level, then it'll run off.
Yeah, but she now has, she has swamp puddles rather than running water.
Right, I, there may not be anything, you know, to do, but I, I said I would go take a look.
Alright, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, thank you, bottom line.
Awesome budget, uh Gary, everyone's on Saturday, uh it's always a scary day, as I realize we're about to start to kick off with budget season. Um, it's gonna be a couple, but I appreciate everybody being there, um.
There's some things that you don't know behind the scenes, the, the floor being or the uh, or, or the field. Um I wanna thank Jeff Knight for helping, he found out that. Uh you know, we wanted to get that done, and we didn't wanna spend a lot of money, he was able to negotiate, uh deal with his concrete guy. Um so I wanna thank Jeff Knight for that, and helping keep us, helping us keep the cost down, and obviously, that was one of your concerns about. Not having a floor in there, but, so well done, Jeff, um. Yeah, Saturday was another interesting day, thanks to all the people that came out, um and were there, and most everybody stayed for the whole time, which is kind of interesting. Uh went pretty quick too, so Mike, thanks for running that meeting. Um in Bruce's absence, and apologies, I not, I was supposed to, but now I'm not gonna attend the, the. Turkey trot and the tree lightings, um due to family issues, so. I apologize for not being there, you know, I guys, I don't like to miss those things, so. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Mike. Hey. I agree with Chris, wonderful budget session on Saturday, and uh happy Turkey Day.
Alright, um thank you guys for covering for me on the budget day on Saturday. Simply helpful. I appreciate it very much. Um happy Thanksgiving to everybody, everybody, I hope everybody enjoys an awesome one. With that, um just so everybody knows who's watching in, but we're gonna go into non-public session, I won't be coming back. Um so, I don't know, and our, I mean, I, with that, can I get a?
Yeah, folks in the movement, R S A ninety one A. Cemic colon three, number two, Tanya.